Okay, it's four o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Mari, can you tell us that the Kansas Open Meeting Record Act has been approved?
Yes, I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Thank you. Dean Rolkall?
I'm going to call Rol here. Commissioner Alt?
Here.
Commissioner Olson, we all remember him.
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Farber?
Here.
Commissioner Ivy?
Here.
Commissioner Waters?
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Chair Mikesel?
Here.
So we have a point in membership of eight. We have seven present and that constitutes a quorum and we've provided notice of today's meeting, so you may proceed with today's business.
Y'all had a chance to read the minutes. Any questions or changes to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Motion carries. New business. Dean?
Just for everyone's information, we apologize that everything that was originally scheduled for the December 6th meeting had to be pushed aside because we simply didn't have any healthy planners to conduct the meeting, so we're healthy now and we're able to move everything to the 20th. So we appreciate everybody accommodating that. We advertised several public hearing items, the first of which was an application filed by Kansas Wesleyan University and they're requesting a change in the zoning district classification from R2 multiple family residential to a planned development district. And they have also requesting that the Planning Commission approve their proposed preliminary final development plan for Phase One of what they're referring to as Coyote Row or Coyote Row, which is a student housing village that's proposed at the southwest corner of Highland and Claflin. And Mr. Hirsch has done the review and report on Kansas Wesleyan's plans, so I'm going to have him give you an overview of that application.
Thank you, Dean and Commission. You'll have to bear with me, I have a cough drop, but I do still cough a little bit here, so we'll do our best to succinctly present the staff report. This is a planned development district and so they can be a little more complicated than some of our other agenda items in that there's multiple layers and multiple decisions that have to be made. It happens in two parts. So the first part, as we go through the staff report, we're going to look at the proposed rezoning of the property, which currently it's zoned R2, and the applicant, which is Kansas Wesleyan, is proposing to have R2 or PDD R2. So it would be a planned development district with underlying R2 zoning with some modifications. And we'll talk about what those modifications and variations are. So the first thing we'll look at is the zoning and whether or not their proposed zoning is appropriate for the area. And then the second part we'll look at is the proposed preliminary slash final development plan, which is anytime you have a planned development district, there's an accompanying plan that goes with it. And so we'll look at that after we look at the zoning aspects. So for the background, some of this property will seem familiar to you because in 2021, Kansas Wesleyan came up with an idea for some student housing that would be smaller, what they're calling kind of tiny home, student housing village where they'd have multiple independent, single-family dwellings, but they would have a density and have multiple units on a single zoning lot. And so in 2021, they proposed having three units on the corner lot that's out the southwest corner of Highland and Claflin. And in order to construct those three units, they had to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and seek multiple variances. And that happened in September 29th of 2021. And, excuse me, no, wrong page. That happened in May, on May 20th of 2021. Then they came before this board, the Planning Commission for Conditional Use Permit, and that's probably what you're most familiar with. And that happened on June 1st of 2021. And then on September 9th, 2021, the City of Salina, after reviewing plans for the proposed three dwellings, were prepared to issue a building permit. However, that building permit, no activity or no action on that building permit took place and has expired. And the reason that no action took place and expires is because Kansas Wesleyan decided that they were going to modify their plan and expand it to a larger idea. And so what they've proposed now, instead of just three units on the corner lot, they are proposing a multi-phased development where they have seven dwellings on the first phase, which we're calling Phase One, and then three additional units on Phase, what we're calling Phase 1A. So in total, there would be 10 dwelling units at the completion of the proposed project. So each of these dwelling units, and this is the preliminary development plan, so each of these boxes that you see is representative of a dwelling unit. And again, there are seven of them, and they are on the north side of this jagged line. So to the right is actually north. This is Highland right here. Claflin is on the right-hand side. Again, just like with the conditional use that was proposed a little over a year ago, each of these dwelling units would have seven bedrooms. They would be a single unit, but they would have seven bedrooms and then common area bathrooms and kitchens for those individuals who are occupying those dwelling units. So the entire lot, the zoning lot, is a little over 30,000 square feet, which is .69 acres. And as we reviewed the proposed preliminary slash final development plan, we noted that there are multiple, what we would call modifications and variations, that would also be, could also be called a variance. It's the same thing where you're looking at a deviation or a waiver to the strict application of the code. And there's a number of those. There's five in this particular case as they pertain to the proposed development plan, which is one of the reasons why when staff met with Kansas Wesleyan this summer when they were planning this project, we suggested a planned development district. So the plan proposes a unit along Claflin that would have a 10-foot setback in lieu of a 25-foot setback, so that would be one modification or reduction. There's also a unit along Highland that would have a 15-foot setback instead of a 25-foot setback, so that would be another requested reduction or modification. And then, all of the units have a separation distance or setback from each other of 10 feet, and normally 15 is required. So they're requesting from going from 15 feet between the dwelling units down to 10. And 10 feet is the distance in which the Building Code and Fire Code allows you to have separation without sprinkling or providing special materials or fire-rated walls. So the 10 feet still would be acceptable to the Building Code and the Fire Code. And then a fourth variation is the number of principal dwelling units on a single dwelling lot or a single zoning lot. The zoning ordinance allows for one principal dwelling per zoning lot. In this case, in Phase One, we're going to have seven dwelling units. And then when we get to Phase 1A, and we're going to add three additional dwelling units. And so you're going to look at having up to 10 total dwelling units on a single zoning lot. And so that would be another variation. And then the last variation that Kansas Wesleyan is proposing is they're proposing to have shade trees in the public rightsway, four in the Claflin right-of-way on the north, and then four more on the Highland right-of-way to the east. And typically, the zoning code requires all of your front yard landscaping to be in the front yard of your private property, which means behind the property line but not in the right-of-way. And so this would be a deviation that the applicant, Kansas Wesleyan, is requesting of the commission to consider and approve. Excuse me. In looking at the suitability of the development as it exists under the existing zoning, the existing zoning is R2, and the R2 district would allow for dwellings. And historically, that's what these properties that are part of this zoning lot have been used for. So there's a number of properties, these here, that are all part of this zoning lot. And historically, we've had single-family homes that have occupied those spaces. So the use in and of itself hasn't really changed. What has changed is the pattern or form of development that the applicant is proposing. And we're having, again, up to 10 single-family dwellings on a single lot. So the R2 district would not allow it, the straight R2 district would not allow it, because of the required setbacks that are going to be needed in order to bring the proposed plan into fruition, as well as the allowance of having more than one dwelling unit on a zoning lot and the proposed landscaping issues that staff has identified. With that said, the zoning map amendment from R2 to PDD R2 would allow Kansas Wesleyan to construct their proposed Coyote Row student housing village that they're wanting to add to their campus. And it would help alleviate some of the housing demand for their growing population. And it'd also put vacant, underutilized property into productive use for the community and for Kansas Wesleyan. Looking at the character of the neighborhood, for the most part, because this is adjacent to Kansas Wesleyan's property, and they own property to the west, as well as to the north, as well as to the east, all of the surrounding properties are Kansas Wesleyan property. So when you talk about the impact that the proposed zoning change would have on the neighbors, it would be a self-inflicted event. So staff doesn't see that there would be any negative impacts on the neighbors. This is Phase One of a greater master plan that Kansas Wesleyan has for their student housing for the future. They envision having a student housing village adjacent to their property directly on the west side of Highland. And so this would be Phase One of that grander scheme in their minds. When looking at the scale and size of the development, the dwelling units themselves are a little over 500 square feet, so they aren't large. They're not going to be domineering in terms of their bulk in relationship to the surrounding area. And when you look at the density, the proposed density is 11.6 dwelling units per acre on Phase One. And that's, again, the first seven units plus the retention of an existing single-family house. So there'd be totally, total eight units, technically speaking. And then when we get to Phase 1A, and we remove that single-family dwelling unit that's existing and replace it with three new tiny homes, that brings us up to 10 total units, which would come out to 14.5 dwelling units per acre, which is within the tolerances and allowances of the R2 district. There is surplus parking on the site. On the site, I mean the Kansas Wesleyan campus, and we'll get into that a little more when we talk about the off-street parking. So historically, again, the property has been used for residential purposes, so the actual use of the property won't change, but the form and density of the use is what's changing. When we look at utilities, this is an existing area where we have existing development. So we have existing utilities. We have water, a six-inch water line to the east in Highland Avenue. We have a 10-inch sanitary sewer line to the north in Claflin Avenue. And we also have a 42-inch wide storm sewer line directly north of the property as well. When we look at drainage, one of the things we look at is are we adding any additional rooftop compared to what was there previously or historically? And historically, the dwelling units that were on the site before they were removed and demolished totaled a little over 6,000 square feet of rooftop area, and that's with your residential dwellings and your accessory structures. And after Phase One, we'd have a little over 5,000 square feet. And after Phase 1A, we'd have a little over 5,500 square feet. So what's being proposed with the applicant's development plan would actually be a decreased rooftop lot coverage when compared to what's historically been on the site. We look at conformance to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan shows this property being part of the urban residential land classification. And that urban residential land classification allows for R2 zoning as well as planned development districts, which is what we're proposing here in this case, in which the applicant is proposing in this case. So the allowed, or the proposed zoning would be allowed and recommended by the comprehensive plan. The density that's typically allowed for secondary uses in the urban residential district is eight to 20 dwelling units per acre. And we're going to start at a little over 11 units per acre with this particular plan, with up to 14.5 dwelling units per acre at the completion of Phase 1A. So it would be within the range that is allowed for the urban residential land use classification. The location criteria in the comprehensive plan for rezoning to a PDD or R2 in this case would be at the edges of defined neighborhoods along arterial streets or minor arterials. Ninth Street, which Kansas Wesleyan has property that fronts just to the west, is a major arterial. And this portion of Claflin, from Santa Fe to Ninth Street on the north side, is a minor arterial. So this property would fit into that classification and meet that criteria. And there's also a second locational criteria that is conducive for the property, and that's as a transition to adjacent mixed-use centers and institutional uses. In this case, Kansas Wesleyan would be considered an institutional use because it's a university, and it certainly has a mixture of a variety of uses with laboratories, classrooms, student spaces, activity centers, as well as dormitories and things of that nature. So that concludes the portion of the analysis for the proposed rezoning, which is again R2 to PDD R2, with five different modifications that are being requested. So in looking at the site plan itself or the development plan, the development plan has seven units in Phase One, with one of the existing residential dwellings being retained until a future Phase 1A, in which time it would be demolished. And then three additional dwelling units would be added for a total of 10. The street access, there is street access to the north and to the east, where you have Claflin Avenue on the north, and you have Highland Avenue on the east. And if you were to look at the building orientation and site information, I can share some of that with you here on page, it's like 14 of your report, there's some information about it. Again, Claflin Avenue, the plan proposes a 10-foot setback for the closest dwelling unit to the north along that property line. So a 10-foot setback versus the 25 feet that's typically required in R2 district. Highland Avenue, they're requesting a 15-foot setback in lieu of a 25-foot setback. And when we look at the building areas and lot coverages, the R2 district has a maximum of 40. And in this case, after Phase One, we are looking at a 17.11% lot coverage. And after Phase 1A, which is when the existing dwelling that is being retained or is being proposed to be retained, is removed and replaced with three new tiny homes, that total building area goes up to 5,560 square feet, which is a little over 18.5%. So it's well underneath the 40% maximum. So even though we have a pretty dense development in the number of dwelling units that we have on this zoning lot, the actual lot coverage and building area is about half of what could be permitted under the R2 district. Sidewalk paving, the proposed plan does show some sidewalks being part of this development. And the way it's configured is there would be a sidewalk at the northeast corner of the property that would lead and connect to the main campus. That sidewalk would lead into the interior of the development site. And all of the dwelling units would actually have interior sidewalks and access to a center common area. So the access and the front doors of all of the units would face inward to the common area for the student housing village and would not necessarily be facing towards the street like you typically would see for a residential dwelling. The design of the buildings themselves are primarily a hardy plank, smooth horizontal lap siding with a standing seam metal roof. We don't have color elevations that we can share with you. That's something that typically we would receive when reviewing a planned development district. And so one of the things that you, as a commission, are tasked with looking at when you talk about a planned development district is the exterior building elevations and the aesthetic and the types of materials that are being proposed. So one of the things that staff would ask the applicant to clarify when they have a chance to speak to the board is the intended exterior colors of the student housing dwelling units. And then from there, if the board feels comfortable, you can make a decision on whether or not the elevations are of a high-quality visual appearance that you're supposed to be reviewing for. Off-street parking, the campus recently, in 2021, had an addition of 54 off-street parking spaces that were added on the northwest corner of the Claflin and Highland intersection. In addition to those 54 new parking spaces, there was also a surplus, according to our most recent counts, of 84 parking spaces for the Kansas Wesleyan campus. So with the 54 spaces that are being, that have been newly constructed and the 84 spaces that were existing, there are 138 surplus parking spaces available on the campus. And so what Kansas Wesleyan is proposing is to have students who would be residing in the proposed residential units have parking spaces on campus, most likely across the street at the new parking lot. That's one of the reasons they chose to construct this, knowing that they were going to have student housing of some kind on the south side of Claflin. Loading and loading areas are not required for residential properties. Landscaping, landscaping is based on the amount of street frontage that a property has. In this case, the Coyote Row development would require 3,675 square feet. Phase One proposes 5,585, within another 1,533 square feet of landscape area being proposed in Phase 1A. And so in total, you're looking at a little over 7,000 square feet, which is almost double of what they would be required to have. One of the concerns that staff has, however, with the landscape plan, even though they have more than enough area, is the actual planting plan. And so what we have on the screen is the Phase One planting plan, and it shows a number of maple trees that are existing already in the right-of-way along Claflin. And there's four of those. And there are four more in the right-of-way along Highland. And as we mentioned earlier when we were going through the list of modifications, typically, we would require all of the front yard landscaping to be in the front yard area along Claflin and Highland. So one of the things that staff requests is that the applicant explain why they couldn't have those plantings be on the private property, which is what we would expect anyone else in Salina to do, and why this project should be treated differently than all the other projects that come before the City of Salina. And so the total number of tree units that are required for this site is seven. And a tree unit is one shade tree, three ornamentals, or 10 shrubs. We are in excess of seven tree units if the commission were to count the eight shade trees. The eight shade trees alone would provide eight tree units. Again, the issue is the location of those trees and whether or not having them in the right-of-way is appropriate for a development like this. Signage, the residential district, the R2 district, which would be the development standard for signage that would apply to the proposed zoning, would allow for one ground sign and two wall signs, so three total signs, with none of those signs exceeding 32 square feet. So the process now for going through and voting and making a determination on what to do with this particular application happens with approval or not approval of the proposed zoning and then approval or not approval of the preliminary slash final development plan. And so we have a number of alternatives that we've listed on page 19 all the way through 23. I don't want to read them all because it gets a little long. But you could approve the requested PDD rezoning without any modifications and require their proposed site development plan to be revised, to adhere to the R2 development standards, meaning you would approve the rezoning request, but you would not approve any of the requested modifications and variations. Option two, you could approve the requested R2 zoning with any combination of the requested modifications, which are listed, they're in A through E. And you could also approve the proposed preliminary final development plan for Phase One only or Phase One and Phase 1A as submitted. And then three is very similar. The only difference is you could approve the proposed preliminary slash final development plan for Phase One only or Phase One and Phase 1A, subject to certain revisions or conditions. So the difference between option two and option three is that option three, you could have additional conditions that you would like to see come with the approval of your rezoning and final development plan. And then number four is approve the requested PDD rezoning with any combination of the following requested variations, modifications to development limitations in the R2 district, but decline the approval of the proposed preliminary slash final development plan and provide guidance to the applicant and staff of what you would like to see changed. So in that, in option four, what you're looking at is approving the proposed rezoning with whatever combination of variations that you see fit, but requesting modifications or changes to, changes and revisions to the preliminary final development plan. Number five is postponing consideration if additional information is needed. And number six is to deny the PDD rezoning request and to deny the proposed preliminary final development plan as submitted. And in that case, you would cite the reasons why you would be denying that. So we do have a number of findings on page 18 that would support the rezoning of the property and making a map amendment to the zoning map from R2 zoning to PDD R2 zoning. Staff believes that would be appropriate. We also believe that the proposed modifications for the preliminary slash final development plan are all appropriate with the exception of the requested variation for the landscape regulations. Staff believes that additional justification is needed from the applicant to explain why the trees that are being proposed in the right-of-way couldn't be on private property as they're expected of all other developers in Salina. And in order to approve the requested variation to the landscape regulations... And in order to approve the requested variation to the landscape regulations, excuse me, to be located in the public right-of-way of Claflin and Highland, the planning commission would need to cite its justification for allowing the trees so that we don't create or establish a precedent for future applications. So if you do agree with the applicant's proposal to allow the tree units, particularly the shade trees to be in the public right-of-way, we would want to craft the justification and specifically why we're allowing that in this case when we normally don't. So that we don't open up a precedent to future applications that might have unintended consequences. So staff would recommend number, option number three. And we would also recommend approval of the modifications one through four or A through D as it's listed on page twenty-two, with the exception, we would not recommend approval of the landscaping variation. And we also have a number of conditions on page twenty-three that we feel are appropriate with the requested approval. So with that, staff will take any questions that you might have.
I drove by there, there's some existing houses there. One looks, on the south, looks like it's pretty vacant. Are those part of the phase two that need to be torn down that Wesleyan already owns?
The applicant can speak to that, but I think, I think the very south one, which I guess is the, the, the north one now, because everything to the north has been removed, is the, the dwelling unit that is going to be retained as, in, with phase one and then removed in phase one A and replaced with three of the, the tiny home dwellings that they're proposing.
Okay, I, it just looked like it was a pretty, I didn't think that area was big enough to do all of this, but evidently so then. Because a fair amount's already been cleared, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the zoning lot is a little over thirty thousand square feet, which sounds like a lot, but it's less than an acre. It's a little over half an acre, it's point six nine of, of an acre. So it's, whether or not it's, that's perceived to be large or not, it is a pretty dense development that's being proposed. When, if you were to approve it and the development is completed to full fruition, it would be fourteen and a half dwelling units per acre, which is, is a pretty dense development. So you're right, it is, it is a dense development, but it's, it's also student housing, and that's not abnormal for student housing.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Dustin, I was wondering, you said that the number of units on a single lot, which we usually allow is one. And then, of course, now we're wanting to increase that lot to what, seven?
Mm-hmm, seven independent structures versus one independent structure, yeah.
I guess my question is, have we, have, has the commission before, have they approved any, I mean, anything like this where they have allowed more than one existing unit per lot? Or is this a first?
Well, I think there's a number of planned development districts that have been done in the past. If you go around Salina, I know the Housing Authority has planned development districts that have multiple dwellings on a single zoning lot. So I, I mean, yes, it's been done before, I can't go through and give you a whole bunch of examples, maybe Mr. Andrew could. But to answer your question, it has been done, yes.
The two that come to mind because the Housing Authority's in the process of selling some of its units, there's a development called Two-Lane Court that's behind the old Waters True Value Building, old Brown Mackey Building. And it is, it's a single platted zoning lot, but it has like eight single-family residences on it. But the way that that is set up is that there's a single owner of the lot, and then the tenants don't own a individual lot. There's not an individual lot that goes with each dwelling. There's something similar to that over, called a Sage Court, that's over off of Broadway across from Sunset Park. It's the same type of setup, the Housing Authority owned all the property, and they put seven houses on a single lot. And again, the Housing Authority owns all the land. So this is similar to that from the standpoint that you have a single owner and that the usual model for a single dwellings or even for, for duplexes or townhomes is that you create a, a lot for each, a separate lot for each of the dwellings. So what we're doing is we're wiping out the lot lines. There's going to be a single landowner, which is Kansas Wesleyan, and then there's just going to be a single zoning lot and with multiple dwellings on there. And so if you have a zoning district like R3, which is designed for apartments, you can have multiple apartment buildings on a single lot because that district's designed for that. But the R2 district doesn't allow for multifamily apartments. So this is being done to allow more than one dwelling to be located on a single lot under a single ownership. So this is, it's fairly unusual, but there, as Mr. Hurd said, there's a number of examples of this type of thing. Even developments like Florida Soul and places like that, you have situations where the owner only owns the townhome unit and homeowners association owns all the ground that it sits on. So technically, it's a single zoning lot with multiple dwellings on it. And that's done through a planned development district. So this is just following that model.
So what we're looking at then, this being a student housing, I mean, we could be looking at multiple places now with, with tiny homes coming in now, doing the same type of development?
If someone wanted to do this that wasn't Kansas Wesleyan and wanted to do the same type of model, but retain the land area under a single ownership and have multiple dwellings, and they would take care of all the grounds, they could do something similar to this as a, a village is a good term for it because it's a single ownership with multiple living spots on it, but it's all owned in one, and maintained by one entity. So yes, it's not because it's a college or it's Kansas Wesleyan. This could be emulated by others who wanted to provide this model of housing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I had a question, maybe you could answer this. I, I noticed back on May twentieth that BZA met and they gave variances for the, specifically the setbacks. Front yard setback on Claflin of sixteen feet, front yard setback on Highland of fourteen. And I've noticed that we have decreased that, or the proposal here is to decrease that from sixteen feet to ten feet on Claflin. Why, what is, can, can you explain why we're changing that?
So it's, it's a bit difficult with all the lines and the way it's projected. The paper copy probably shows it better in your packet, but this is the proposed, let's see. This is the proposed preliminary slash final development plan. And what the applicant is proposing is, is a little different than what was done in twenty twenty-one or proposed in twenty twenty-one that never, that was completed. In twenty twenty-one, when it came before the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission for Conditional Use, there were all the units who are lined up all next to each other with the, the same setback. And what they're proposing here to add visual interest and fit in with their campus a little better is they're staggering all of the setbacks. So none of the buildings actually have, they, they don't all have the same setback because they're, they're staggered. And so what they've done is the closest one is this, this unit right here along Claflin. And it, it's the, the unit with a ten-foot setback. Now, it's the only unit with a ten-foot setback, but it's, it's done so that it's, it's staggered from the other units for, I believe, visual and aesthetic purposes. And something else to keep in mind, and it was in the report, but I didn't, I didn't really get into it because I was trying to convince it as much as I could, is there is a large right-of-way along Claflin. Claflin has a larger right-of-way than what is typical. I believe it's, is it ninety-deep?
It's a hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten, so, yeah. If you look here, this is, this is a really large right-of-way. So, so the setback isn't as big of a deal because it's still quite a ways back from the curb. But it, it is something that the applicant is proposing for, I believe, visual interests. The same thing with, with Highland. Highland also is, Highland is the one with the ninety feet. So that also is wider than normal. I mean, normally your residential right-of-ways are going to be sixty feet. So this is thirty feet wider than, than what you typically would see, which would add fifteen feet to, to each side of, of the center line. So that's, that's something to keep in mind with, with those setback requests.
That makes sense, I just, I just noticed the differential between the, what was approved earlier and, and what was going forward.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hey, just band on Chad's question a little bit, but what, what's the reasoning that the ordinance says fifteen and twenty-five?
Say that again.
What's the reasoning that, that they chose fifteen and twenty-five as a setback? And how much problem would that cause to change that?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what, what's it gonna, the effect gonna be if it changes to ten?
So typically, the R2 district would allow, or require rather, a twenty-five-foot setback. And if that were the case, all of the buildings would, would be set back the same distance where they'd be lined up, which is normally what you see in a residential neighborhood. So if you drive down a residential street, you'll see all the houses are basically lined up with each other. There's not a lot of variation with, with how far back they are. In this particular case, what it would do is it would push the dwelling units closer to the, the common area in the center, which is the, the center of the, the residential village, so, so to speak. And so it would reduce the common area inside, and it would also make it so that the setbacks weren't staggered among the different dwelling units. And I think because, and I'll let the applicant speak to this, I'm kind of speaking inside their head a little bit, speaking for them. But I think what, what the architect is intending here is you have a, a single design that doesn't have a lot of bizzards to it because it's pretty simple. And so to add visual interest and make it an aesthetic cohesive village, we're gonna stagger the location and setback of them so that it, it, it kind of makes it interesting and gives it some variety.
I understand why they're wanting to do it, but what, what's the reasoning behind the city saying it should have been twenty-five?
Why is R2 district require twenty-five-foot setback? Okay.
We require twenty-five or thirty-foot setback in all residential districts. And the big difference with this project, with what you would see, say, with the two subdivisions that you have following on this agenda, is that in most residential housing and most residential subdivisions, you have to accommodate driveways and motor vehicles. And the purpose, part, one of the purposes of the front yard setback is to provide a place for vehicles to park off the street to have a sufficient distance. So if you had, if you had a house in a subdivision that had a ten-foot setback and you tried to accommodate a driveway, you're gonna end up having the vehicles for that household parked over the sidewalk or blocking the sidewalk because the house is too close to the street to have enough distance to accommodate a vehicle between the house and the sidewalk. In this case, there, because the, all the parking is across the street and they're not trying to accommodate vehicle parking here, the need or justification for the twenty-five-foot setback on Claflin is much less because you're not trying to accommodate the parking of vehicles between the front of the dwelling and the street. So the reason that the standard in residential subdivisions is twenty-five feet or in some cases thirty feet is to provide for open space, both to accommodate vehicles and to allow for visibility for vehicles that are backing out of driveways. In this case, we don't have any vehicles that we're trying to accommodate. We don't have any vehicles backing out into streets. So there's a lot less concern about having the dwellings closer to the front sidewalk and property line because we're not having to deal with front yard parking.
And then I have a question on C, can you clarify? Because originally I thought I heard you say ten feet met fire code on separation, but you have five feet on a couple of them.
So the way that that reads is it's a reduction in the required minimum separation between two dwellings of five feet. So the reduction is five feet from fifteen down to ten.
I got you, thank you.
Yep, no, it's, I get you, it's confusing, it's confusing to write, but it's, but it's how we, we write variances and exceptions.
Okay.
All of our standard residential districts require that dwellings be separated by fifteen feet from each other by their sidewalls. And in this case, they're requesting to reduce that to ten feet, which the fire department has indicated they do not have concerns about.
Any further questions, the staff?
Got one quick question. So no off-street parking required, but Cla- or actually Highland currently has off-street parking on the west side of that road, which makes it difficult when you're coming down Highland because you have to kind of go over. Is off-street parking anticipated to stay on the west side of Highland through there? Or is that going to become a non-parking location through the city?
This is not, this, none of Kansas Wesleyan's campus is exempt from the city's off-street parking requirements. The only variation that they have is that they have been allowed by historic right to take credit for the marked spaces that are on Claflin and are on Cloud. They don't get any credit for any spaces on Highland. Those are historical on-street spaces from the time that those are residents. But what Kansas Wesleyan has done is they have provided their off-street parking requirements to be met by a number of different satellite lots. So what we're saying is that the off-street parking requirements for the students who reside here is being met in the lot across the street. That doesn't mean that you'll never have Kansas Wesleyan students or staff parking on the west side of Highland, but that parking situation and that congestion would be looked at like it would in any other part of the city. If it's congested from having parking on both sides, or the fire department thinks they can't get down Highland, then that would be look, looked at. But it's, it's no different than any other residential setting where someone can have a driveway at their home, and if they prefer to park in the street instead, they can. It's just public parking, and it's, it doesn't exempt you from meeting the requirement to provide off-street parking. But we have that situation with a number of concerns that sometimes the parking lot is built, but then employees are directed to park in the street to make room for customers or for others. So that, the parking, public parking in the street is allowed until it becomes a problem. But this is, they are obligated to show that they have enough space for these students in the lot across the street, but you can't, because Highland is open to parking. If a student chooses to park their vehicle on Highland, that's gonna be allowed unless it becomes such a problem that it has to be eliminated.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to hear from the applicant. Yes, say your name and, and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm John Swirey, I'm the director of plan operations at Kansas Wesleyan. It's one hundred East Claflin Avenue, Salina, Kansas, six, seven, four, zero, one. A couple of things I'd like to speak about that the board had brought up was the landscaping plan. We had, when we had done the parking lot north of Claflin, we had taken out some trees. And we had replaced those trees once the parking lot was finished. And then in order to keep it looking the same, we just placed the four trees on both sides of Claflin. So it was uniform as you went down the road. So originally, we just replaced the four on the north side, and it made the south side look the same. The reason for the four trees going along Highland Avenue is to coincide with the existing trees. They're already They're already running through the easement or the right-of-way that follows along Highland. So we want to try to keep that as straight and as looking as uniform as we can. Other than that, the coloring of the houses, J.C. Builders is our contractor that we have signed a contract with. The colors are similar to what he's used out at some of his other projects. I don't have the colors on me at this point in time, but we can provide colored renderings.
I think what we're all wanting to know is are they going to be purple roofs?
No, sir. All of the roofs are going to be bronze, just like the existing roofs on the campus, and they will all be steel-sided roofs.
But are we presuming then that, given the nature of this layout, that the buildings will probably be different colors each?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's going to be just like any other normal neighborhood. We want it to look modern, just like any other place. Another one of the major reasons behind the staggered is simply for privacy as well. Because the houses are exactly the same, every single one of them, by offsetting it allows the windows to be off so that you're not looking straight directly across to your neighbor's home. So that was one of the other reasonings behind that. Is there any other questions that you might have for me?
I'll go back to the parking one. So with the parking on the north side of the lot designated for those houses, is Kansas Wesleyan going to implement a parking permit for those individuals for specific spots up there? That way, those individuals that are living in that area have a spot to make sure that they have a parking spot that is not taken over by somebody else?
All of our students on campus have their vehicles registered with our Student Development Parking Department, and they all have a parking placard. So if we need to know what vehicle it is, if we need them to move, or if there's an issue or anything like that, we can contact the owner of the vehicles.
Right.
And that is, there's some signs on campuses that say, "Permit parking only," and so on.
Right, but is there a permit specifically for that, for the residents in this housing area? So if I can go to specific parking in areas, and I can only park in P-two to P-three, is that going to be part of what this is for this housing development?
That is not in the plans at this time, sir.
And why is that not?
Because our students drive all over campus and park in different parking spots all over the campus. So we don't have a signified parking spot for each dorm or each building or anything of that nature.
So I don't have a guaranteed spot if I'm living in that area, then?
First come, first served at this point in time.
Okay.
Can we pull up an overhead of those trees? I didn't get a chance to drive by. I'd like to see what we're talking about with the...
The trees that Mr. Swagerty referred to are trees that you won't see in the aerial photo. I think there's four that were put in recently here. Is that what you were saying, John, right?
Yes, there are two on either side of that driveway, and then directly across north are also same in line with that. Because when we redid the sidewalk and everything on the north side, we had to take out trees. Kansas Wesleyan University is a tree campus, USA campus, so we try to put as many trees on campus as we can so that we can keep up our designation as a tree campus.
Go south a little bit, or are those trees?
Those are the trees I was talking about right there.
Are those going to stay on the bottom there?
Those are existing trees already on there, yes, sir. That's why we're going to add more along Highland Avenue there, so that it has a continuous row of trees through there.
And I love the trees. I'm glad you are a tree campus. With it being that way, are you opposed to having more tree units within this development? Or does that mess up the aesthetics?
We still have a tree that is inside the development, and I believe in one of the planter boxes, there are two trees. So on the interior, right in those areas, right back there on that far back, it'd be the west, southwest corner, if you're looking at it on a map, that house right there. If you go straight below there, there is already an existing tree that's still there on the site. So we've left that tree there. It's a good mature tree. It's in good shape, no issues with it at all, and so we've left that. So we are not opposed to having trees out in the area. It's just we're trying to keep it as open as possible so that if we have areas for students to go to, if they want to have a cookout or something like that, there's not an issue.
I figured that's what it was. I just, in order to not provide another variance, just trying to hit all the tree units inside of the right-of-way as opposed to, or outside of the right-of-way, I guess we would say.
Have you had a chance to take a look at the five conditions that were?
No, sir.
Do you want me to read through them?
Please, or give it a copy.
So the first one is the applicant shall revise the preliminary slash final development plan to show the location of all proposed front yard landscaping being located within the front yard setback area on KWU's Coyote Row property, with any plantings proposed in the public right-of-way being classified as voluntary campus beautification and not constituting as part of the required front yard landscaping for the project. So what that says is that the development plan would be revised so that certainly you could keep the trees in the right-of-way, but those would be voluntary and kind of above and beyond, if you will, and that there would be additional trees added to the private property of Kansas Wesleyan. So that's the first condition. Second condition is the applicant shall submit a revised landscape planting plan showing the location, types, and varieties of the specific plantings being proposed for Phase One and Phase One A for staff to review prior to issuing a building permit. The revised landscape planting plan should show the location of all proposed front yard landscaping being located within the front yard area of Kansas Wesleyan's Coyote Row property. And landscaping on Phase One A portion of KWU's Coyote Row property may be deferred until it is developed. So what that means is we would revise the preliminary final development plan. We would also revise the proposed landscaping plan, and the proposed landscaping plan would be expanded to Phase One A. So what you see on the overhead right now is just Phase One. What that means is we would have a line that would show this as being future development, and it would be expanded to show the entire zoning lot, including the Phase One A portion and the landscaping proposed in the Phase One A portion. And then number three is all landscaping, sidewalks, circulation, parking, fencing, and other improvements shown on the approved site development plan shall be completed prior to occupancy of the building and shall be the responsibility of the applicant. That is a standard condition that goes in virtually every single planned development district. Number four is also a standard condition, and that's the project shall be completed in substantial conformance with the approved site development plan. Landscape plan associated billing elevation drawings, which are hereby incorporated by reference. And condition five is also a standard condition, and that's the building permit for the project shall be obtained within eighteen months of the site plan approval. And that would be all five of the conditions.
So just for the commission's benefit by ordinance, the city, through the City Forester and Forestry Department, becomes responsible for pruning, trimming, keeping above sidewalks, all the street trees in the city, meaning trees that are planted in the public right-of-way. So our landscape ordinance requires that if you're doing a project, for instance, I'll cite the conversion of Sunflower Banks Building to Comcare on South Ohio. The landscaping that they put in as part of that project is all on the Comcare site, not on the right-of-way for South Ohio. And the reason for that is that the landscaping belongs to Comcare. It's theirs to maintain. The only justification in the ordinance for allowing the landscaping in the right-of-way is if there is some physical barrier or conflict, or you're redeveloping a site, and the property is already paved out to the property line, and there's not a space to put the landscaping on your own property. In this case, we couldn't see that there was any barriers or anything that prevented the required front yard landscaping from being in the front yard instead of in the right-of-way. We think it's great that the campus, and we've worked with Slyna Regional Health Center on Santa Fe on cooperative street trees and things like that, but Slyna Regional Health Center puts their required landscaping on their own property. And so we're just trying to differentiate between streetscape and street trees and actual landscaping that's installed and maintained by the property owner. And since we were not able to see any barriers or anything that prevented them from putting the trees on their own property, then it's just important, if the commission wishes to not require them to put trees on their own property, that there be some basis cited for that. So that as we've had, I mean, even as we look to 2022, the number of projects and planned developments that have come before this commission, whether it's the hotel at the mall, or the assisted living facility that's being built on South Ohio, or others that have come before this commission where the landscaping is placed in the front yard on private property, we just need something for the commission to base their decision on if you want to allow the trees to be moved out to the right-of-way. We think it's great to have trees out there to beautify the streetscape, but if you look at what the intent of the landscaping ordinance is, it's to have those plantings owned and maintained by the owner.
The trees that you said you've already planted on the north side, and I think on the north side of Claflin and the east or west side of Highland, right?
They're north and south on Claflin, sir.
Okay. Are those, where are those planted? Are those planted in the areas you're wanting to plant these in? Or you said the easement, so I didn't understand that.
Those are already, so those four trees are between the sidewalk and Claflin Avenue, and we planted those there. We have, those four right there, sir, are existing trees that we planted already.
Dean, what's the difference between what they've done there and what they're requesting here?
What they're being asked for and what the landscape regulations require is it has a formula based on the street frontage of a property and the depth of the property. And it requires that new development projects put the front yard landscaping in the front yard based on what that frontage is. In some cases, it might be one or two trees. In some cases, it could be seven to eight trees. In a case like this where it's a double frontage. But what they're proposing is to get credit for trees that are out in the right-of-way so that they don't have to plant any on their own property as part of this project. And we can...
I understand that, but it looks like they planted those in an area that we're saying isn't allowed.
We're not saying they're not allowed. We're not, as staff, we're not allowed to give credit for that because they have planted those trees for the city to take care of because they're not on their property. They're on the city's property. And so the landscaping ordinance requires that developments put the plantings on their own property and that they own and maintain those plantings. When you put the plant, if you're asking to push it out in the right-of-way, it usually needs to be based on the fact that there's a barrier, or there's pavement, or there's something that prevents us from putting it on their own property. Dustin may have to go back to the aerial photo and look at other Kansas Wesleyan projects, but the ones that I'm familiar with and have worked on, Kansas Wesleyan has put the landscaping on their campus and not out in the right-of-way.
But why were those four trees allowed to be planted there, is my guess, it seems like?
I don't know that they were allowed to be planted there because there's a permit process through the City Forester to review those, and I don't know what occurred or didn't occur. But you can put trees in the public right-of-way, but it's usually done in consultation with the City Forester because once a tree is there, you can't remove it without permission from the City Forester. They have to go out and look at it. So we're just trying to differentiate between the public domain and streetscape and street trees and private project landscaping. And so it's fairly unusual for an entity to put trees in the right-of-way instead of putting them on their own property. You, as a planning commission, can give them credit for putting them in the right-of-way, but there needs to be a reason for them to be in the right-of-way instead of on private property. And we couldn't come up with one, but you can, and the applicants can. But Dustin, you're going to have to go farther east, and you're going to have to look at all the trees that are on the campus.
And what he's saying is, we can't give you credit because they're not part of that property.
And we've already stated that this right-of-way is larger than normal. What was it, one hundred and ten feet or ninety feet, or whatever it was? And?
And when you have wide a right-of-way between the curb and the sidewalk, that's good because if you plant a street tree and there's only five feet between the curb and the sidewalk, eventually that tree is going to heave up the sidewalk or cause a problem. There's plenty of space there, and streetscapes are good. It's just that I can think of a dozen projects that have come before the planning commission that have all put their landscaping on their property, not in the right-of-way. And even the parking lot across the street, the landscaping is supposed to be in the parking lot, not in the right-of-way. And any trees that they planted on the north side of Claflin were voluntary campus beautification, not part of the landscaping for the parking area. But if you want to give them credit for that, that's fine. But if someone comes in next year and says, "We don't want to put, we don't want a single plant on our own property. We want to plant them all out in the city right-of-way," then you, as a commission, have to think about, "Well, we don't like that idea." Well, you approved it over here. What was your basis for approving it over here and telling us no?
So basically, if we deviate from that, we just have to provide the justification for doing that?
Yes. What is the reason for allowing the trees to be placed in the right-of-way instead of on the project campus?
I have a count question for Dustin. Mr. Swagerty mentioned that they were going to be leaving one tree, and I believe that might be in the One A phase of that. Would they get credit for that tree that they left?
As a front yard landscape tree, they would not because the front yard area is the front twenty-five feet along the adjacent street frontages. So what that means is the front twenty-five feet along Claflin and the front twenty-five feet along Highland. So it'd be spaces in front of or around the front of the buildings that are on those two frontages. So on the north side and then on the east side. So the tree that is an existing tree that Mr. Swagerty referenced would be towards the rear of the property and in the northwest corner of Phase One A.
And if they were to utilize these seven shade tree things, let's say in terms of shrubs, that'd be talking about seventy shrubs, basically?
Well, you can, the code does allow for shrubs to count towards your tree units up to a third of the total tree units that are required. So whatever a third of seventy is, then those could count towards the front yard landscape area. But the remaining balance would have to be made up with either ornamental trees or shade trees.
And these four that you've already planted, they are established trees? Is that correct?
Yes, they've been there for over two years.
So we would not expect you to dig those up from the right-of-way for this project?
It's not in the plans, but if it has to be done, it has to be done. We're trying to get houses built.
I don't think anybody's talking about digging anything up. I think we're just talking about where the credit for those would belong.
And that's where I was going. They're going to be there.
Yeah.
And nobody wants them to go away, and nobody's discouraging that from happening. The question before the commission is developers A, B, and C come before you, and all of their landscaping is on their own property. And another one comes forward and says, "We don't want to put it on..." And another one comes forward and says, we don't want to put it on our own property. We want to put it in the right of way. We don't want anything on our own property. The question before the commission is, what is the justification for saying it's okay for party D to put it in the public right of way after parties A, B, and C put it on their own property?
Let me throw a question back at you, Mr. Swagerty. Given the, the arguments you've been hearing back and forth about this, this is the, is the seven shade trees or, or shade trees and ornamental trees and shrubs something that you could come up with and, and fill, fulfill?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay.
So one idea that I just kind of came up with as we're talking about this is if this ornamental tree, because it's got a pretty decent space around it, it could be converted to a shade tree. And then these four trees, since they're not planted yet, could be moved on the private property. That would give you five shade trees, which would be five of your seven tree units. And then, I don't know how many shrubs there are, but we could probably come up with enough shrubs in the front yard area to, to complete the seven tree units. Because they have some around the entrance here at the northeast corner, and there's, there's also some around the, the front of the buildings.
I got to give you kudos on putting the trees out there to start with. I mean, we, as a city, we have cut down so doggone many trees in this city. And, I mean, to me, it's refreshing to see somebody has planted something, you know, the way it is out there. The question is, you know, the credit? I'd like what just Dustin just brought up about taking those others and, you know, the way, if you, since the ones that aren't planted, move them. Where it's going to, I think it's going to take care of itself on the other thing. But like I said, I, I think it's great that you planted those ones out there.
Thank you, sir. We're not opposed to planting the trees in the front yards in any way, shape, or form. It's not going to be an issue. It's a non-issue.
If, if we decided to move ahead with this, Dustin, could, could you work with Mr. Swagerty and, and the architect and, and?
Yeah, certainly. So that would be basically conditions one and two would, if that, that's the direction we want to go, we could work with Kansas Wesleyan to come up with a compliant landscape plan with, that would have all of the required plantings on their property, and then the four, um, shade trees that are currently along Claflin would just be a voluntary extra variety for the beautification of the campus.
And, and I agree with Commissioner Haye. I, I think it, it definitely adds to the streetscape. Looks great.
Yeah, part of the disconnect here is my fault because I, I encouraged, um, that we pushed to get Phase 1 and Phase 1A in front of the planning commission so that you could approve Phase 1 and Phase 1A at a single time, so they didn't have to come back later to get Fa- Phase 1A approved. But there's a number of drawings that are in your packet that are Phase 1 only. And the only, there's like a single drawing that shows Phase 1 and Phase 1A combined, and almost all the other drawings are Phase 1 only. And so that makes it difficult for you as a commission to, to piece all that together. But to me, it didn't make sense to come back before the commission to do Phase 1A if they knew what Phase 1 and Phase 1A was going to consist of today.
Thank you. Any further questions of the applicant? Uh, at this time, we take comments from the public. And, uh, seeing as, well, we have a very lengthy agenda today, we're going to limit comments to five minutes.
Okay, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, a couple of things here. Um, as you know, I've been before you before. My name is John Blanchard. I'm a landscape architect. I've got roughly 30, I don't even know at this point, 35, 38 years of experience in that business. Um, I also re, did a redevelopment plan for North Salina. So I have to tell you, I'm a K-State grad, but I'm a huge Kansas Wesleyan supporter. Okay? Um, I want to tell you that this really isn't a tiny house development. A lot of people don't like tiny house developments. This really is a cottage cluster. This is a cottage cluster development. These are very popular in Pasadena back at the turn of the last century. But nowadays, in Portland and Seattle and other places where they're, they're extremely popular, they're innovative, they've done a great job on this thing. And, um, I will say that I appreciate the parking permit problem because I have a friend that's over there and lives near bogies, and they have a real tough time with offstre- their off-street parking because of bogies, uh, their meat place, uh, Smoky River Meats, and then overflow from the student parking. So as long as, I, I think he would be happy as long as there's a way that he could kind of get ahold of Kansas Wesleyan and, and let them know if there's, if there's problems. Um, like I said, this is more of a cottage cluster development, but I will sit through the entire meeting, so I don't take up too much time here. But I want to discuss with you an option that will help Kansas Wesleyan in their future phases and anyone else that wishes to pursue this type of innovative product. Um, and I will just say this, as far as you had asked for, if, if you need findings to say, you know, why should we allow trees in the right of way? I will just say this, that trees in the right of way in most communities are standard operating procedure. Most cities that, that have neighborhoods that they want to, uh, provide high value to, think, uh, Country Club area in Kansas City. Um, think Highland Avenue in Salina. Think of some of the areas up on the hill that have trees in the right of way in residential areas. But if you're looking for technical reasons, I would, I would give you three reasons why you should allow these trees in the right of way. First is that street trees provide a form, they have a form, they have a function, and they have an aesthetic quality to them. First is that shade trees provide shade for not only parked vehicles, but the sidewalks that are adjacent to them. They also help to lower street maintenance costs, and that if the sun isn't constantly bearing on the pavement, that pavement tends to last longer. And then the other thing is, is that the closer we can plant a tree in a parking strip, um, to the street, it is a significant traffic calming device. Um, you tend to have less speeding along those roads. So I, I'll just close on this, but we talking off, we've spent a lot of time talking about landscape plans and no time at all talking about, this is an innovative plan, they did a groundbreaking several months ago, they should, J.C. Builders should have pulled permits on this already. And if we can codify cottage cluster developments, then I think it makes it faster, more predictable, and easier for people to build these types of developments. I'd like to take my hat off to Kansas Wesleyan for pursuing this. Um, and I'd just like to leave it with this, that landscape plan, just like architectural plans, aren't designed by accountants and formulas. There are three things, and I mentioned them earlier, form, function, and aesthetics. Uh, I started doing landscape plans in 1985 as a third-year student at Kansas State. Never one time did we ever talk about formulas and tree equivalence and, and all those things. I ask that you also revisit changing that, that landscaping ordinance and involve your local landscape, uh, landscapers and, and landscape designers, because I don't think any of them like this, this system. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Four minutes and 45 seconds. You are good.
We, we would just note that the planning staff agrees 100% with everything Mr. Blanchard just said, except that's not the issue before the planning commission. It's not the question of whether street trees are good or they should be encouraged because they could. The question is, should tree, street trees be allowed to substitute for having landscaping on your own project?
Uh, anyone else in the audience care to address the commission? Dustin, do we have anyone online?
We do not have anyone on Zoom from the public currently.
Okay. Bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I think my only concern is still kind of on the parking part of it, just mainly even going back to Kansas State University. I mean, when you have the parking areas, you typically have a parking permit for an area so that it doesn't become overrun, and somebody else is using that so that you don't have a place to park. So I see that, especially if they continue to develop this to the south, they're going to be limited on how many parking spots they're going to have to the north in that parking spot. So I think it needs to be at some point addressed that it's specifically for those individuals. Landscaping part of it, I like the trees on the parking, but I don't think that we give them credit because we've had too many discussions on other developments on South Ninth Street where we had to try to make sure that they got those plants within those areas when they were trying to keep it off of the frontage area. So.
I think we have one more comment.
Comment for John.
Okay. Sure. I'm done.
I'm Ken Oliver. I'm the executive vice president at Kansas Wesleyan. So if we go to the south, if we expand this project, we have two other pieces of land that we're planning on for parking lots for that.
Okay.
One of those, we're not, we don't want it public because we don't want people mad at us, but we do have stooch spins right there that's on the corner that we talked about. If we had to, we would fence that out in a nice way, concrete and iron rod.
Okay.
And we also have additional parking that we just tore, uh, South Hall down. So parking will not be a problem if we expand this project.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And, and I, I guess, um, I, my daughter was an Oklahoma State alum, and, and the parking lots around there were, were segregated by, by a, a number or a name. And, but then you get into the problem of enforcement, you know? So then Kansas Wesleyan has to hire somebody to go around and enforce all that, you know? Does your permit match this parking lot and stuff? And I, I think at some point, size-wise, that probably happens, but your, your point's well taken, I think.
And just for the commission's benefit, when we've looked at different, whether it's a nursing school project or other projects, rather than looking at parking for a specific project or facility or building, with Kansas Wesleyan, we are just taking a campus-wide approach to parking. And so we just look at the sum total of all their facilities, the sum total of all their spaces that they have on the campus, and we just maintain a, a running total. And it's a similar approach that we've taken to, to the Salina Regional Health Center where sometimes buildings get built where parking lots were, and then new parking lots are created. So what you try to do is keep a, a running inventory of this is how many spaces they need, this is how many spaces they have, they have a comfortable surplus, so we don't get hung up necessarily on their specific location as long as they're part of the overall campus.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve application number PDD 22-1 with option three with the following, uh, conditions on page 23.
Is there a second?
I'd second it.
Been moved and seconded.
Mr. Haye, if I, if I could, which of the reductions or any of the reductions and variations do you want to go with that approval?
The reduction you mean setback?
Or the variations and modifications. So like there's, there's, there's five listed. There's the setback along Claflin, that would have a 10-foot setback, and there was the 25. There's a setback along Highland, which would have a 15-foot setback versus the 25. There's the reduction of the separation distance between the dwellings from 15 feet down to 10 feet. And then there's the variation on the number of principal structures on a single zoning lot. And then there's also the landscaping variation.
I think we want to look at A, B, C, and D, all of them there.
Okay. All of them but E is what you're thinking?
Yeah, all of them but D, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Let me understand that motion again. Uh, so you're looking at, if we're on, uh, page 20 of that staff report, you're looking at option three, three A, B, C, and D in addition to the five variances on page 23. Is that correct? Thank you for that clarification.
You seconded. Correct. Yep. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. And move on.
Just for the benefit of the applicant, that is a recommendation from the planning commission, and the plan is currently to have that go before the city commission on the 9th of January.
Thank you. Okay. Item 3.2, application Z 22-12 and P 22-3.
We have a companion, um, set of three applications that we scheduled a public hearing for this afternoon, and those involve three different requests, um, that were filed by Beck's Hybrid Seeds out of Atlanta, Indiana. And these were, um, sub-item A, which was a request to change the zoning district classification of a certain property on North Ohio from A1 to I2 light industrial. The second part of that, sub-item B, was a request that the planning commission, uh, conduct a concurrent site plan review of their proposed facility on North Ohio. And the third one was a request that the planning commission approve their proposed plat to create a, a single building lot on the west side of North Ohio Street. Since we advertised the hearing, um, we were contacted by representatives of Beck's, and they had been in off-and-on discussions with the Ward family that owns property to the west or behind their proposed location. And so they contacted staff about asking the planning commission to postpone consideration or taking any action on these items because those negotiations could result in a, um, acquisition of property that could change the location or configuration of, of their initial plans. And so our recommendation would be for the chair to open the public hearing on item 3.2 A, B, and C, that if there's any commission members that have any questions of staff related to the, those items, that you could address those to staff, and then for the chair to see if there's anyone in, present at the meeting or, um, on via Zoom who had comments or questions about item 3.2 A, B, and C, because we did advertise that for a public hearing. And so if there's people who have comments or questions, we would want to entertain those.
Okay. So, so this, uh, public hearing is open. Uh, any questions of staff regarding this application? Uh, do we have anyone from the audience that would like to talk about this application?
We do not have anyone on Zoom either.
Okay. Is there a motion to, uh, we need a motion for, to continue this, correct?
Yeah, the, the recommended action would be to postpone consideration of items 3.2 A, B, and C to the commission's January 17, 2023 meeting, and we think that can be done in a single motion.
I would make that motion.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Okay. Uh, looks like we are on to application P 10-1B.
Application P 10-1B is an application for the final plat approval that's been filed by Stone Lake Development LLC. And the proposal is to, uh, final plat the southeast corner of the Stone Lake property, which is a total of 150-acre piece of ground that's located at the northeast corner of Schilling Road and South Ohio Street. And it's a development that centers around a sand pit lake that was created by Allsop Sand Company. So the original developer, um, of Stone Lake was the owner-operator of the sand company that created the lake. And they, um, were the developers of the Phase 1 area. And then there was a second development phase consisting of 17 lots that were located on the north side of the sand pit lake. And those, um, lots were purchased by Doug Bradley from the original developer. And then in 2019, Stone Lake Development LLC, which is Todd Roeburg, Kelly Dunn, and Craig Piercy, purchased all the remaining lots in Stone Lake addition from the original developer. And there was a total of 107 lots included in that purchase. And so- And there was a total of 107 lots included in that purchase. And so they have been developing those lots in Phase 3 in multiple different phases. And so Phase 2, north of the lake, and Phase 3 are currently under development. And the city commission recently, or at least in May, approved a resolution of advisability and authorization for Phase 3C. So I don't know if you have the phasing map that was in the packet destined or not, but that might help a little bit with the, to see what, with the color coding, what, what has occurred. So this is the phasing map for Stone Lake. And this area here was the Phase 1 area that developed. This is the Phase 2 area. These remaining colored areas are Phase 3A, B, and C. This, there's a number of homes that have been built in here. It's not fully built out, but it's close. And the developers have moved down to this area. This area has not been filled in yet. And so the area that's under discussion today is to have a approved final plat layout for that southeast corner. So this became, came before the planning commission in June of this year, and you took three actions at your June 7 meeting. The first action was to approve a change in zoning classification for this area from agricultural to a mix of R single-family, R1 single-family, and R2 multifamily residential. You approved a preliminary plat of this 15 to, 52-acre tract, subject to a number of conditions. And the third action you took dealt with street names within the existing and proposed Stone Lake platted areas. And so a, a street segment to the north of the lake was changed from Crystal Lake Drive to Shoreline Drive, and Shoreline Drive north to North Shore Drive. You approved the request to change the roadway east of the lake to Piravita Drive, south of the lake to Vista Sur Drive, and a segment to the southwest of the lake from Shoreline Drive south to Malibu, Malibu Drive. And then in your report, we kind of summarized that this, this tier of lots that back up to the lake were what you approved R zoning for. This row of lots up here were approved for R1 zoning, and then the R2 zoning for townhomes was down in this tier of lots that would back up to Schilling Road. So the request is to take the preliminary plat that you reviewed and approved, turn it into a final plat. We have the 52 acres. About 35 of those is actually developable. About 17 of it is underwater occupied by the lake. We have 48 total lots. There is no public street connection to Schilling Road, but maybe you can see it. I've got a chair in my way, so I can't. But there is located right in here, there is a, or I guess it's right here, there is a 60-foot wide emergency access connection point to Schilling Road that separates blocks 2 and 3. And so in this case, our stormwater detention is the sand pit lake itself. So storm drainage would be directed to the sand pit lake. All of the proposed street right-of-way would be for public streets. This property's been within the city since 2010, but it came into the city agriculturally zoned, as this was not part of the original development. When this was originally proposed for development, this area over here had not been completely reclaimed by the sand pit operator, and so it took longer to clean up and restore. So as we look at the subdivision design, there was a, an amendment to the subdivision regulations approved in 2016 that defined the term perimeter street and direct access perimeter street. And new subdivisions are required to abut and have frontage on a direct access perimeter street and have at one, at least one public street access point on that direct access perimeter street. That also directs the planning commission to look at the need for additional emergency access points into the subdivision. And so in addition to that one direct access point, a new subdivision shall have any additional means of access in and out of the subdivision, either by direct street connection or indirectly to existing streets, as are determined necessary by the planning commission. So the Stone Lake Edition as a whole has two public street access points, Shoreline Drive, which is in place, and Crystal Place, which will be constructed as part of development Phase 3C. Stone Lake Edition and the proposed Stone Lake Edition Number 2 have almost one half-mile of frontage on Schilling Road, but there's no street access points on Schilling Road because of its current unimproved condition. And there's also an interlocal agreement in place between Saline County and the city, which is required that the city maintain, or that the county maintain Schilling Road. And so since that is the county's responsibility, it's their decision as to whether they would like to see it upgrade with paving, and they have not chosen to pave the property at this point. So the city staff, including the city fire marshal, noted from the 2010 on that an emergency access point should be provided on Schilling Road, not only to provide an alternative means of access, but also to provide an opportunity for a future street connection to Schilling Road should Schilling Road be paved at some point in the future. So the, the corridor that's provided there, the 60-foot emergency access easement, is wide enough that should the opportunity allow, and Schilling Road would be improved someday, then that would allow for a public street connection to Schilling Road, which would be desirable. As far as Ohio Street, it is considered the direct access perimeter street for Stone Lake. It's a four-lane city street. It's an arterial street. It was rebuilt and widened in 2006 as part of a KDOT project, and it carries over 10,000 vehicles a day between Schilling Road and Magnolia Road. So this plan has, follows existing street locations, existing topography. There's basically an extension of the Shoreline Drive loop, south and west, to serve the 48 proposed building lots. And upon completion, would have a complete loop around the lake. There's good internal connectivity within Stone Lake Edition. There's more than one route that can be taken to reach each lot, and there's no dead-end streets proposed. All of the streets would be public streets with 33 feet of paving and 60 feet of right-of-way. And so they all meet the dimensional requirements to be city standard street. And as noted, there's an emergency access point provided on Schilling Road. The street names are consistent with what you reviewed in June with Piravita Drive, the north-south street along the east, and Vista Sur along the east-west, running parallel to Schilling. Staff did note that it appears that Vista Sur is misspelled as Vista Sun on the plat, but we're pretty sure it's intended to be Vista Sir. We have reviewed all the dimensional, dimensions of the lots and the R-zone lots, R2-zone lots, and R1-zone lots meet all the dimensional requirements and the zoning ordinance. All the lots have frontage on and access to a public street. There would be restricted access on Schilling Road, so none of the lots that back up to Schilling Road would have driveways on Schilling Road. It doesn't appear to staff that there'd be any difficulties for reasons of topography or other conditions that would prevent building permits from being issued. We provided information about the utility systems are in place. All of those are already in place, so it's a matter of creating a looped waterline system that would come around and tie together. So you'd have a complete eight-inch loop. The same would occur with sewer. There would be a sewer that would be put in, in a loop around the east side of the lake. Gas and electricity would be extended from the existing subdivision. All of the subdivision runoff would go to the lake. This subdivision is in the South Middle South High School and Coronado School, elementary school areas. All of the traffic from this rezoning request area would enter and leave the area by passing through the existing Stone Lake Edition via Shoreline Drive. And so based on the mix of housing proposed with the townhomes, this area would generate about 560 vehicle trips per day at full build-out. And that would compare to about 480 trips if it was all single-family homes. So it's our understanding, we know that there is a Stone Lake Homeowners Association now, and so it's our understanding that the lake or pond area is under the ownership and management of a homeowners association, and that would continue. And I expect that this area would be part of that homeowners association. So as we looked at the public improvements needed to support this, there'd be about 3,300 lineal feet of asphalt or concrete paving with the new streets. There'd be sidewalks on both sides of those streets. There would be internal water mains and public sewer lines to serve those lots. The developers have indicated that they would seek to utilize special assessment financing for the internal improvements needed to serve this addition. They have not submitted a request for that at this time. And so either they would need to set up a, a set of covenants for this as a subdivision, or amend the area that's subject to the existing covenants and incorporate this into the covenants that exist for the remainder of the Stone Lake Edition. So the future land use plan shows this as an area where new growth should occur in a contiguous manner to adjacent existing development. And schoolchildren can reach Coronado School via South Ohio Street pedestrian crossing. USD 305 has indicated there would be no busing of students from Stone Lake to Coronado Elementary. So if you agree that Ohio Street is the direct access perimeter street for Stone Lake, and if you believe that all technical issues have been addressed to your satisfaction and you wish to approve this final plat, we've suggested a number of conditions on page 10 and 11 of the report. Most of those are fairly standard, just for the benefit of some of the new commissioners. Right around 2017 or 2018, the U.S. Postal Service didn't really announce it. It just kind of happened that they don't allow individual homes to have mailboxes anymore. And so all new residential developments and subdivisions have to have community mailboxes. So part of the review and layout process is to work with the developers to find appropriate locations to distribute community mailboxes within the subdivision. And we try to find locations that are, are between building lots, or most people don't like have a mailbox right in front of their front door. So one of the conditions is that we will just work with the developers to provide appropriate mailbox locations for those community mailboxes, and that would be considered part of the infrastructure for the subdivision. And then item seven was that the homeowners association should be formed to maintain the sand pit lake serving this subdivision, or the existing homeowners association documents need to be expanded to incorporate this area into the existing homeowners association. So in the alternative to approving this proposed final plat, you could postpone consideration to a future meeting date if you feel additional information is needed, or if you find that the criteria for public infrastructure or connectivity have not been met, then a motion should be made to deny the final plat citing what criteria you think have not been met. With that, I'd be open to any questions that you have about the plat or plat drawing.
Questions of staff? Would the applicant care to address the commission? You know the drill.
Hi, Kelly Dunn, 1216 Shoreline Drive. We think you've been covered pretty well. It's, this area will be included in the homeowners association, and the same set of covenants will apply to all these lots as they do as of the rest of it. So everything will just follow suit of what we've been doing out there for the last several years.
Could you clarify, is Vista Sir not Vista Sun?
Yes, yeah, it's Vista Sir. And if you have any, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions of the applicant? No questions of the staff? Pierce, you ready to have some action or some discussion? I'm sorry, public comments. Anybody online?
No, there's no one online.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just would note that this plats are considered administrative items, so the, we notify the abutting owners, but most of the abutting owners were the developers, or they were Mr. Johnson, who owns the sand pit to the east, and he's, he's aware of this occurrence.
Good. Okay. We'll get back to the commission for action.
I'd make a motion to approve application P 10-1B with staff recommendations on page 10 and 11.
Second.
Moved in second to approve application P 10-1B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Motion carries.
And we would just comment that usually between a preliminary and final plat, there's some changes or variations, but this, this final plat was very consistent with the preliminary plat that you had already reviewed. So there were, there were very few changes to comment on.
Okay. Application P 15-3B.
This, I don't, I assume it's by design and not by coincidence, but the, these two subdivisions have been tracking together with each other. This also was filed at the same time in April of 2022 and was brought forward to you with a rezoning request and a preliminary plat. So what we're looking at is having had numerous discussions and challenges relating to coming up with a financing and timing plan for improvements to Holmes Road. Magnolia Hills, Inc. is now ready to move forward with plating their remaining land holdings in this quarter section. And so they are requesting final plat approval for a close-to-47-acre tract of land that's bordered by Magnolia Hills Estates Number 2 on the west, a rural home site on the north, Holmes Road, and agricultural land on the east. Holmes Road, and agricultural land on the east, the First Covenant Church, and pasture land on the south. So, most of you have not been on the commission that long, but this really corresponds to the area that was included in a preliminary plat submitted by Magnolia Hills Inc. in 2017, but now also includes what I refer to as the peninsula, which is a 16-acre tract of land that extends down along the west side of Holmes Road to Magnolia. And so, the final plat shows 112 residential building lots for single-family and two-family home construction. What I refer to as the northern area, which is an extension of Magnolia Hills Edition Number Two. So just for everybody to get their bearings, this is north up here, there's a detention pond constructed here, this is Holmes Road, and this is tying back west into the existing subdivision, and then the peninsula area along Holmes extends south from there. So the northern area has 62 lots, which would be set aside for single-family home construction. The peninsula area has got 50 lots, and the zoning requested for it was R2. Just to clarify, R2 allows for duplex or townhome development, it doesn't require duplex or townhome development, so we, R2 provides greater flexibility, so if a developer wants to build a single-family home on an R2 lot, they can. They can't build a duplex or townhome on an R1 lot. So in terms of previous action taken by this commission on June 7th, 2022, you held a public hearing on a request to rezone and preliminarily plat this property. You took two actions at that meeting. You recommended approval of a zoning change from agricultural to a mix of R1 and R2 zoning as requested by the applicant. You also approved a preliminary plat layout, subject to a number of conditions, which we outlined on page four of your report. And as follow-up to that, I think the report should read June 27th, not June 7th, but the city commission did approve an ordinance on first reading that rezoned these lots, and so blocks 1 through 6, which is the northern portion, is zoned R1, and block 7 through 9 was approved for R2 zoning. So in this case, unlike Stone Lake, in case of Stone Lake, their direct access perimeter street is Ohio Street, which is not only improved, it's improved to four lanes, but in this case, the direct access perimeter street is Holmes Road, and Holmes Road is not improved to city standards at this point in time. And so, on the plat, there are two public street access points are being provided, and so this is Ridge Hill coming down along the pond area here would connect to Holmes Road here, and then you have stone post that would come down and tie in there. So there would be two points of connection with Holmes Road. And so, for the most part, they have followed the existing topography, and they have integrated the street system here with the streets to the west and Edition Number Two, and they have added a public street connection to Magnolia Road at the south end. And so, the way that they are laid out in a curvilinear fashion, they've more or less followed the topography, and they're not set up in a way that encourages use by through traffic, although you can connect on stone post from Holmes all the way through to Markley Road in the future. So this has 2,400 feet of frontage on Holmes Road, and so it's essentially an L-shaped tract, and it's bordered by, on the south, by the, what's known as the Magnolia Hills Edition, which is the campus of First Covenant Church, and that's a 32-acre site. And so, one of the things you can't see in this picture is that along the south end of this subdivision is a very large sewer interceptor line that serves southern and eastern portions of the city. And so that is the main artery for collection of sewage discharge for the southern, southeastern, and eastern part of the city. And so that line runs up Markley Road, then it makes an L-shaped turn, and it runs east across this property. And so at the far eastern end, this road, Stone Post Lane, is run over the top of that sewer line, and the Director of Utilities generally likes or prefers that because it's much easier to get access to a sewer line of that size for maintenance if it's out in a street as opposed to being pinched in behind people's homes. And so, it's important that we make sure that there's a sufficient open space to allow city crews to get access to that sewer. So the other thing that's notable about this line, and part of it's related to the terrain, but the west, 580 feet towards Markley Road, that is a force main that's under pressure, and then when it gets to the top of the ridge, the whole eastern portion is a gravity line, which means that this area can simply tie into it. And so at the western part of this property, the sewage is being pumped uphill under pressure, and then in the eastern portion, it's a standard gravity line, and so it's easier to connect Markley Road is a two-lane former county road, and it was annexed in the city in 2012, it's now a city street. And right now, that provides most of the access to this subdivision. And so, Stone Post Lane right now is the only street that accesses and ties back directly to Markley Road. But we have Stone Post Lane and Ridge Hill Lane that are connecting back to Holmes Road. So again, all the streets in this subdivision would be public streets with curb and gutter and 33 feet of paving. They all have 60 feet of right-of-way. There's a couple eyebrows or knuckles that we would refer to just to provide better sites for housing. And all of the right-of-way dimensions conform with city standards. There is 23 lots that would back up to Holmes Road, and four lots that would back up to Magnolia. There would not be individual driveways allowed onto Magnolia Road or Holmes Road for the future. On page seven, we've listed all the proposed street names. The only one that caught our attention was Fox Ridge Drive, just for the benefit of the commission. There is a Fox Borough Drive in southwest Salina. There's a Fox Tail Drive that intersects with Markley Road. You have the discretion to approve or disapprove street names if you think one might be too similar or confusing in terms of the name. We'd also note it's not a street, but there is a Fox Run subdivision south of Schilling Road. So it's your judgment as to whether you think any street name is too similar that it might cause confusion or mix-up. So, all the numbered, or all the lots are numbered on the plat. There's a number of separate blocks, a total of nine separate blocks. There's 113 total lots. One lot has been set aside for the drainage easement detention area. That area has already been deeded over to the city for city ownership and maintenance, and so the city has already a property owner in the subdivision from that regard, although when that was transferred to the city, it was not a platted lot. So, again, we've looked at the terrain, we've looked at the topography on the lots, we don't see any of these lots as being unbuildable. Some of them may take a little bit of site planning or regrading, because there is quite a bit of terrain in this subdivision. So, most of the utilities are in place, it's just a matter of creating a looped system. The one thing we wanted to call out is that there's a 16-inch line in Magnolia Road, but that 16-inch line stops at the Covenant Church, and the Director of Utilities is recommending that that line be extended east to Spring Hill Drive, which is in the peninsula portion. I don't know if we can get to that, Spencer. So this is the southern peninsula portion, and there's a 16-inch line that runs along Magnolia Road, but it stops at the church, so that would need to be extended east to get to this connection point, so that this whole system could loop back together to the line in Magnolia Road. As we noted, we have an interceptor line that's 27 inches in diameter and has adequate capacity to serve this subdivision. Some of the sewer lines are actually in place in this area that were installed in order to serve Edition Number Two. This property is within Evergy's service territory. We say that because it was in the territory of a rural electric cooperative, and there was a little bit of discussion and negotiation, and that needed to be done to have the territory given over to Evergy, as the rural water, or the rural electric cooperative wanted to have a franchise agreement with the city, and the city declined to grant the rural electric cooperative a franchise agreement, and so the boundary was adjusted, and this is Evergy's service territory now. We have natural gas in place, all the stormwater improvements are already in place, the pond design's been analyzed by the city engineer, and we have accepted all the improvements. Fire response is from Station 4 at Marymount and Crawford, and this area is in the Meadowlark, Lakewood, and Central School districts. We have attached some information to your report about the costs associated with Holmes Road, but there is a benefit district that has been formed and percentages of costs estimated and allocated. And so the plan from the developers is to phase development of this property in from west to east, and so the final phase, which results in the connection of Phase Three to Holmes Road, would result in, that would trigger the requirements to improve Holmes Road to an interim street standard. So, at the point in time that they construct a street that connects to Holmes Road, then 2,400 feet of Holmes Road from the north end of the subdivision to Magnolia Road would have to be improved. As part of that, the City Public Works Department has been looking at the possibility of, in that design, incorporating a 10-foot hike bike path that would be on the west side of Holmes Road, and so sufficient right-of-way and easement has been provided for that. So, as we look at the public improvements that would be needed to support this, we have almost 6,000 feet, lineal feet of street paving for internal streets, and then there would make Magnolia Hills Estates proportionate share of the cost of upgrading Holmes Road to city street standards abutting the subdivision. We would have four-foot sidewalks in all the public streets, and a public sidewalk in at least one side of improved Holmes Road. As I noted, we've been looking at, in lieu of a sidewalk, constructing a 10-foot hike bike path on the west side of Holmes Road. The design and construction of the detention pond is done. It's just a matter of getting the flows from this area connected to and drained to that existing pond. And so, they would be responsible for all the internal water lines, the public sewer lines needed to serve individual building lots, plus they would have a share of the cost to get the 16-inch waterline extended east to tie into their subdivision. The city would be responsible for, we have already taken over ownership and maintenance of the detention area, and then the city's going to have a proportionate share of the cost of improving Holmes Road to interim street standards. So, the Phase One area that was identified by the applicant has 19 lots up in the northwest corner of this subdivision. Again, the applicants have indicated an intent to seek to use special assessment financing in Phase One and future phases. There's no property owners outside this subdivision that would be impacted by those assessments, except for possible assessments or benefit fees relating to upgrading Holmes Road. So, the benefit district has been formed to reconstruct Holmes Road, and that included county property on the east side of Holmes, so that there would be an equitable sharing of costs. But there has not been a benefit district formed for Magnolia. Again, there, it's not clear, we believe that there would be a similar set of restrictive covenants for this subdivision as there was for the other parts of Magnolia Hills Estates, but we would need the applicant to confirm that. So, this is consistent with the city's future growth map, and it's a contiguous extension of an existing subdivision. And so, this meets all the criteria for that, except for the current condition of Holmes Road, which needs to be upgraded. And so, if you concur with staff's finding that Holmes Road is a direct access perimeter street, and if you believe that all policy issues and technical issues have been addressed to your satisfaction and you wish to approve this final plat in the current form, then we've outlined some conditions on page 12 and 13 of your report. Again, most of those are pretty standard. Of course, the one that stands out and makes this subdivision unique is that Holmes Road is the direct access perimeter street for this subdivision, and under city policy, the developers are responsible for improving 2,400 lineal feet of Holmes Road from the north edge of the subdivision to Magnolia Road at the time that a public street connection to Holmes Road is made. So, they can move from west to east, but the point comes, when they introduce traffic onto Holmes Road, it will trigger a need to have that improvement made, which is a pretty dramatic improvement, because there's not many situations of residential development where we're usually on an asphalt street that's a, or asphalt road, that's a county rural road that needs to be upgraded, but this is a gravel road. And so, just for the benefit of the commission, the proportionate share of the Holmes Road improvement project- improvement project would be 380,000 applicable to the 62-lot northern portion and 248,000 applicable to the southern peninsula. And then the cost for the remainder of that project would be carried by the city with the only means of cost recovery would be if some areas on the east side of Holmes Road developed, and they would be responsible for their proportionate share. So with that, this is certainly a little more complicated because it has, it's tied in with improvements to Holmes Road. I think the only two questions we have for the applicant to clarify is, one, whether the phasing plan that they submitted initially is the phasing plan that they're planning to pursue, which is basically to go from the west to the east. And then the other question is, it's a, Spencer, if we could go back to looking at the northern portion again, it's been a little unclear to staff. There is a, there's a detention pond up, it's off the map here, but it's in the southeast corner of the Wheatland Valley addition, and that pond discharges into this property with the water needing to eventually get down to this pond so it can then be discharged and go across to Holmes Road. And it would be helpful for the applicant's design engineer if they could inform the staff and the planning commission of how the discharge from that Wheatland Valley detention pond is going to reach this pond. Because right now, it just goes in kind of a general swale or ditch across a field to the pond, but this is going to have a street system and lots. So we would want to have that explained and then hear comments about whether they're being consistent with their phasing plan.
Any questions, staff? The applicant care to address the commission?
Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to hear our application. It's been a long road. Anyway, we agree with, with everything the city staff has said and the agreements, and we think they've done an excellent job bringing this forward to you. Excuse me. You have a couple of questions. The phasing, we think at this time, that is how our phasing will go. There's a possibility on the R2 leg that, that joins Magnolia, depending on market conditions, that, that could change and make, maybe sooner, or it may be the end. We're not sure. That's to be determined by the market. The other question you had was on the drainage coming down from Wheatland.
We want to stop at that aerial photo real quick, Spencer. No, the aerial photo, I think it was just a, just, it's just above this. You scrolled by it. So there we are. So there's, there's a detention pond in the corner of Wheatland Valley here, and the water gets discharged and is supposed to, I don't, it's my understanding that it's going through this pond and on over to East Dry Creek, but if it, it's either going into the pond or it's bypassing the pond. And so we would request that the applicant's design engineer clarify that.
Justin Owens here with Cal Valley to answer that question for you.
Thanks, Stan.
Justin Owens, Cal Valley Engineering, 742 De Volle Avenue. So when we designed this pond originally, lucky enough, Wheatland was, was, we were also designing Wheatland as well. So we were the designer on this Wheatland Valley addition and designer for entirety of this. And when this pond was, was actually built before anything else was done, we had planned for this development down the road to discharge in here as well. We originally were, looked at the option of not doing a detention pond on Wheatland, thinking this could be a regional detention pond, but that required us to upsize the storm sewer significantly to get it through Magnolia Hills to detention ponds. So we opted to go ahead and put in a detention pond at Wheatland. But to answer Dean's question, all of the storm water that enters the Wheatland detention pond discharges through the storm sewer system and into the storm sewer system that's already been constructed with the Magnolia Hills addition. And then that storm sewer system routes, there's, I believe this is Must, is this Mustang?
Mustang Lane.
Yeah, Mustang Lane here. So that's where it discharges into the storm sewer system. Storm sewer system routes about around behind the backside of lots, down around this existing rural home, and discharges into the detention pond here.
So it won't be going into the street system?
It would not go into the street system.
Yeah, we don't have the contour layers turned on, but there's, there's quite a, a contour dip that just kind of runs right, right through the middle of this property and then kind of bends back to the northeast.
I will, we'll add that that was designed to city requirements for a storm sewer system, which I believe is a 10-year event. You're always going to have a storm that's going to exceed your design. That, at some point, the storm sewer will be overwhelmed, and we did account for large vents being able to come down the street and will provide a place for the, that to discharge from the street and into the detention ponds. So that was all calculated and, and we, you know, it's part of the city's requirements that all 100-year event has to be contained within the right-of-way, and that's what we've done on this.
So you said the, the current detention pond already has the sewer system to connect to the new detention pond already in place?
Right. So when we, when the first, first, or it'd be the second addition, it's already, the first phase has already been built, we installed the storm sewer system with that, knowing that Wheatland Pond was going to tie into it eventually. And now that Wheatland's been constructed and that storm sewer system's in, it's all connected at this point.
Yeah, this was, it was actually more challenging on the developers and on the design engineer to cut this into two separate developments and subdivisions because the, the sewer connection for serving addition number two had to go all the way east almost to Holmes Road to make a connection to the sewer line. So a good part of the sewer for this subdivision is already in place and had to be installed ahead of time, and a lot of the drainage improvements as well.
Stan, you've seen the nine conditions that the staff has recommended, and you're okay with those?
I agree with all conditions of staff.
Okay, thank you.
If you have no, no more questions, adjust and or myself, or maybe you do?
Any further questions? I think we're okay.
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Nobody online? At that point, I guess we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve application P-15-3B, requesting approval of the final plat of Magnolia Hills Estates, number three.
Sir, second? Commissioner Olson. Been moved and seconded to approve application P-15-3B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, guys.
Unfinished business, Dean?
I don't have any preliminary discussion items in terms of unfinished business. You'll be getting a meeting cancellation notice from Margie shortly after you return home that says that the January 3rd Planning Commission meeting will not be held due to lack of agenda items, but we will have a meeting on January 17th. Don't, we'll have the backseeds stuff back on there. We still got to give the parties time to have their discussions, but that seemed like a reasonable time. And then we have an application for what's being described as a utility hut or hub that would be constructed behind the Stat Care Building on South Ohio on a vacant lot area back there, and that is to serve a, an internet provider, and that is something that requires a conditional use permit and review by the planning commission. And then we have something unusual in terms of a text amendment that will come before you. We have, the only reference we have to fireworks or fireworks warehouses or storages classifies fireworks as high explosives, and so it's, it's a conditional use and very limited in heavy industrial districts. But there are two types of fireworks and the types of fireworks that are sold in the fireworks stands around the community, and people discharge their homes are not classified or considered to be explosive fireworks. They're considered to be consumer-grade fireworks, and we have, someone wants to have a storage facility for those inside the city limits, and so they have filed a text amendment application to distinguish between commercial grade and consumer firework storage. So those would get treated differently. So those, those would be the items that we'd have for your, your January 17th meeting, and then we'd have an annual report that would summarize all the actions and cases you considered in 2022, just to remind you what you did, so.
Speaking of what we did, I believe this is Commissioner Hayes' final meeting, and I want to thank him for his service and wish him luck in his new endeavors.
Thank you.
Second. I'm going to put your nameplate back in the counties, move it from the city to the county side so that you can reuse that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We do have a public forum.
Comment, okay?
He's been waiting a long time.
I am sorry.
I appreciate you guys. I won't, I won't take too long here and just give you that right back. John Blanchard, as I mentioned in the Kansas Wesleyan presentation, I think that there is a, a path to get to doing these things a lot more quickly and efficiently. Dean, you will remember on October 18th, 2016, was it Tuesday? There was a study session about, the topic was tiny houses. And following that meeting, I had, well, during that meeting, I, I made some comments at the meeting and, and had a short conversation with, with you, Dean, at that meeting, and I sent you an email, and it contained, it was a real short message. It just said, hey, here's some resources that we had talked about, and I think it'd be helpful. And they pertain, and there were four, four PDF files, and one was on a model ordinance for cottage cluster developments. Another one was a cottage housing code, very, very short documents, under 10 pages each. And then part of that conversation too were, was a conversation on accessory dwelling units, which a lot of people will convert garage to a mother-in-law apartment or some other thing like that. But they're all, there was, there was a model ordinance for that, and then, and then one other document that had to do with accessory dwelling units. My point in bringing this up is that this is a perfect location, and you're the perfect body to bring these up. And I will just say this, that the, the reply, Dean, that you sent to me was that you said, I will include this in our follow-up study session. And I'm not aware if there's been a follow-up study session to that.
There's not been, but let me introduce you to Spencer Aiken, our new planner.
All right.
Responsible for coordinating a study session on those topics in spring of 2023.
Okay. Now, I bring this up only because there's been significant conversation about the Driever Group and some of what they're, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but the group out of California that was looking at doing some stuff over at the old Holodome and, and then some other things. And, and part of that was, it was a cottage cluster development. And if we want to kind of, if, if this board can help the city commission in, in one big way, it would be to get that ball rolling so that not only when we have big developers that want to do cottage clusters, we end up small develop, small developers can do these things. You only need to put together one or, or two or three small lots in North Saline, and you can do a cottage development, or anywhere else in town. So, Dean, I will, better yet, I will, Spencer, what's your email? I will send this, I will forward this email to you.
You need to give Spencer, Spencer's being the collector of all research on tiny homes, cottages, accessory dwelling units, and what's your other assignment, Spencer?
Okay, do that, and I'll grab that. Just one last thing I'd like, like to ask is, a couple of things, quick, quick things. Do we anticipate any final plat submittal for River Run anytime soon?
We have not seen one, but we have had some discussions with the developers because they, they're changing a few things in the way that they're trying to separate themselves from the existing River Run development, and so it's taking them a while to work on those things, but they do anticipate bringing something forward in early 2023, as I understand it. I have not seen anything.
Commissioner Hay, thank you for your service on here. You asked a lot of great questions over the many, many meetings, and look forward to you continuing that on the county commission. I think you would agree with me on this comment. I just, as a cautionary note, I would just like to add, being a former board member, where open meetings are extremely, looked at extremely closely, that just want to remind you that you can't send text messages back and forth during the meeting, just as you can't pass notes back and forth during an open meeting, just as you can't whisper to one another during an open meeting. So just caution you to be really careful about that because the city takes open meetings very seriously, and, and the county does too, and good luck to all of you, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, and thanks for your comments. And you were four minutes and 46 seconds. And I presume there's nobody online?
We have no one online.
Okay. And now I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And a second. Moved in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stay here.